I'd like to call the August 6, 2020 Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Juan Craft to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I'm reading from "Puppies for Sale and Other Inspirational Tales" by Dan Clark. Whole person learning. Educators teach us art that we might put ourselves in another situation and feel what he feels, music that we might not just hear but listen, language that we might not just speak but communicate, history that we might learn from the successes and failures of others, government that we might question authority and get involved, science that we might come to know both the seen and unseen worlds, math that we might always begin logically with the end in mind, vocational education that we might understand practical relevance to take what we know and apply it to what we want to accomplish, physical education that we might run and not be weary, walk and not faint, nature that we might respect all living creatures, plants, and beings, and realize how we are all connected in the great circle of life, and finally, self-esteem that we might love life. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to pause for a moment of silence for Mr. Chris Idlet, who passed away unexpectedly this week. He worked for Currituck County Schools and retired from the school system, and he was a wonderful person, and he will be dearly missed. Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first, and I have a second. Any discussion? Agenda is approved. Public comment session. Individuals or groups will be called in order in which they signed up and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address. And we have Mr. Robert Griffin that signed up tonight. Mr. Griffin, if you'll come forward.
Thank you. Robert Griffin, 436 Poplar Branch Road in Poplar Branch. So good evening.
Good evening.
Before I begin my comments, I would call your attention to communication as to the time of this board meeting. The Currituck County Schools website lists tonight's meeting as starting at both 6:00 and 6:30. When I called the school system's general information number, the person answering stated tonight's meeting started at 6:00, whereas other places on the school system's website stated 6:30. So I hope in the future our system can communicate this basic information about start times clearly to the general public.
I agree.
During the last month, I served on a committee of faculty and staff at Currituck County High School. There were nine members on this committee, and it was led by Ms. Scholler. Each person contributed to the committee's purpose and listened to the comments without interrupting others, just the way a committee should operate. I left these meetings with the belief that something positive was accomplished in preparing for the upcoming school year. I believe this committee functioned well because of Ms. Scholler's leadership, so I wanted to publicly commend her this evening for that. I also wanted to commend you, the Board of Education, for allowing Currituck County High School to hold a traditional graduation ceremony for the class of 2020. As a parent and as a teacher, I appreciated this ceremony as it was completed safely and successfully. Your unanimous vote to conduct this ceremony was evidence that this was the proper thing to do. I want to thank each of you for the wonderful evening for the class of 2020, their parents and their faculty and staff of Currituck County High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, tonight you will consider a resolution supporting local control of school opening. While current guidelines make virtual instruction the only feasible option, Currituck County should have the flexibility to offer the option of face-to-face instruction for their students. It is not reasonable for our families to have virtual instruction as their only option. Our schools should be prepared to have students return to classrooms at the earliest possible date, understanding that the current restrictions are prohibitive from allowing that to occur. So when that occurs, we should also have the ability for those who do not want to return to the classroom to not do so. With proper planning, we can deliver face-to-face instruction as well as virtual instruction to serve our students and families at a high level. I hope your resolution tonight will encourage this to become a reality. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
I would like to make the motion that we dedicate the Currituck County Middle School auditorium in Mr. Buddy White's honor.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we do have a resolution supporting local control of school opening. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Craft. Let's ask Ms. Rose if she'll read that resolution, and then we'll have your motion to approve. Ms. Rose?
Resolution supporting local control of school opening. Whereas the North Carolina general statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems, and whereas local control over establishing the opening and closing of schools and related protocol are integral components of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have been vested, and whereas the North Carolina governing body seized control of school systems by establishing and imposing statewide mandates regarding the closure of public school buildings for in-person instruction through Executive Order Number 117 on March 14, 2020, and extending said closure through the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year via Executive Orders Numbers 120 and 138, thereby limiting instructional delivery methods and diminishing students' access to a complete, free, and public education. And whereas the current one-size-fits-all school reentry mandate is that in-person learning would occur with social and physical distancing and other health mitigation strategies, requiring alternate student schedules, demanding more of teachers by requiring both in-person and remote instruction methods to be developed and delivered negatively impacting student transportation, family finances, and social interaction with fellow students and staff. And whereas the Currituck County Board of Education deems said mandate will negatively impact the students, staff, and parents of Currituck County from educational, emotional, and financial perspectives, and whereas Currituck County is a remote and rural county in that there are sections of the county that do not have access to Internet services, thereby requiring alternative delivery methods which are unviable for both schools and parents, and whereas with a projected student enrollment of 4,278 students, the district received 1,394 parent responses on a recent survey, revealing that 45.05% of participants preferred Reentry Plan A, 20.83% of participants preferred Reentry Plan B, and 17.35% of participants preferred Plan C, evidencing parental support of a more flexible reentry plan. And whereas as of August 3, 2020, Currituck County had 70 confirmed cases of COVID-19, of which 18 are active cases, 52 cases are recovered, and with no deaths reported, statistically establishing that COVID-19 has not impacted Currituck County as it has some other North Carolina counties. And whereas by implanting feasible and realistic measures, Currituck County Schools is confident in its ability to safely reopen the school system on its own accord. And whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that during the closure of school beginning on March 14 through the end of the 2019-2020 school year, children have experienced a devastating learning loss and suffered emotionally, which have a disproportionate impact on low-income children. And whereas this closure has also negatively impacted child nutrition, as those low-income children who have access to regular meals at school through the free and reduced-priced meal programs may not have access to regular meals at home and have limited access to the school's summer feeding program. And whereas local boards of education are best equipped to understand the needs of students, staff, and parents while providing a safe environment in order to maximize student success. And whereas restoring local control of school reentry will allow local boards of education to best meet the needs and preferences of the families, students, and educators in its own county, while allowing for daily, in-person, and innovative instructional approaches to attempt to work closely with students to identify deficits resulting from the loss of in-person instruction during the end of the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas administration and staff are eager to reclaim the close relationships it proudly shares with their students in an effort to support a healthy and familiar school environment wherein educational benefits can be provided and emotional health be supported, and therefore be it resolved that Currituck County Board of Education respectfully request that the North Carolina governing body approve Currituck County Schools' reentry flexibility with the assurance that Currituck County Schools is committed to providing a safe and healthy school environment for students and staff, adopted by the Currituck County Board of Education the 6th day of August 2020.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Rose made a few revisions, and what we need to do, if that's the statement-
I read it.
That she read it, we would revise the document.
I understand. I'd like to amend my motion to support her revised, the revision she, I called them, but as she spoke, not the one in our hand, but with the revised one she just spoke to, I'd make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, I have a first, or I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in?
I'd like to have some discussion.
Sure.
And I hope that we can, as this clearly states, regain local control and let parents make the decision for their family and family unit, not bureaucrats in Raleigh, but people right here in Currituck County that are faced with all this hardship. So I'm thankful we have this going forward. I hope that we get schools open in a very short order, and that's it.
I'd like to thank Mr. Griffin for coming out and supporting this resolution. I too, of course, there is one paragraph in here that says we want to support a healthy school environment. Of course, we want to support a healthy school environment. We want to educate the children, but we want everybody to stay safe.
Okay. Any further discussion? Dr. Dobney?
The only thing that I would question you earlier at the work session, it said that we had access, or the kids would have access, to Internet services. And the one paragraph in here says Currituck County is a remote and rural county in that there are sections of the county that do not have Internet access, thereby requiring alternate delivery methods. And I was under the impression that-
We do. Yeah, we solved that problem.
We solved that problem. Right.
We have. We still have, I mean, we could have improvements in our infrastructure for the county, for sure, to increase our broadband.
And technology instruction delivered by family.
We had those devices that were mentioned in the work session that were going to Noss Island.
Correct.
And we're hoping that that resolves it.
Yep.
But we haven't really put that into place as of yet. So we still don't have all the counties served by Internet. We'd be using these alternative methods, as he mentioned earlier. Correct?
I mean, it's, we do not have a perfect Internet system in the county. I'm comfortable with that in.
The statement is correct, then.
We are making, the statement is correct in as far as the infrastructure of the county goes. We're providing through a cost, our school district is providing through a cost, a way for kids to get on the Internet and to provide access to an education.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our capital budget and improvements, we need, Dr. Lutz?
At our June meeting, we talked about our capital budget. During that time, Mr. Craft brought up the desire to purchase wrestling mats. And at that point in time, Dr. Dobney asked the question, how much money do we have in our capital budget fund? And the answer was given that we had 6,000, or 644,260 dollars. I thought that was the general fund. I think that perhaps the rest of the board thought the same thing when that number was given, because it sounded somewhat familiar. Went back and checked into that and realized that we had a little more money in the capital budget fund than we initially expected. Went back and we talked, shared that information with our board, and everyone on our board agreed that that number needed to be brought down, as we were unaware that that, that the fund had grown to that size. So to that end, we are going to purchase the wrestling mats at a cost of $32,000. We're going to set up our mobile units at Mariah Elementary School at the cost of $50,000. We're purchasing furniture at the cost of $33,000. For the mobile units, $23,000 for scoreboards. We're also going to resurface the track at a cost of $195,000. These were items that were left off of our budget. Our initial capital budget, when COVID hit, we were asked to reduce our capital outlay by $400,000, and we're able to get these items at this time. We also have $75,000 technology bulk purchase carryover. We were able to use federal funds to purchase large amounts of technology, thereby not having to spend capital funds on technology that we normally would have. We were able to replace those funds. We would like to keep the difference between about $75,000, $75,000 to $100,000 for technology in the capital budget fund, and we'd like to leave $150,000 for major repair items such as a cooler and so on. So our current number will be $235,715, but that is where we'd like to stay.
Do I have a motion that we approve the capital budget funding?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like some discussion.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you for recognizing that we've been holding on to too much capital money for too long. And I've talked about fund balances, I've talked about general fund balance, I've talked about the capital fund balance, and I'm thankful that we don't keep going without while we got money sitting in accounts. So I'm thankful that you recognize that, and we agree on that, and I'm thankful.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda, we need approval.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We have an upcoming work session on September 3 at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00. And then our Board of Education meeting is also on September 3 here at the historic County Courthouse at 6:30. We'll make, we'll make those changes so that the public will know that our meetings are at 6:30, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will also give you an update for our superintendent search. Dr. Matt Lutz, I would like to commend him for stepping in and doing an excellent job to Dr. Lutz and the staff for implementing our Return to Learn Plan. I think it's a great plan, you know, with trying to stay within the parameters that we needed to stay within with the restrictions that are currently in place. So this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Craft for your closing remarks.
Well, summer's coming on, and the pandemic keeps lingering. I'm hopeful that we'll do a much better job with our rollout of virtual learning, and I believe we will. I also believe that it's not going to be the service that we once provided, unfortunately. I believe that. And I believe that the sooner we get these buildings open, and the sooner we get those kids back in there, the sooner all the negative ramifications and ripples in the pond will stop. And for that, I'm going to try to, try to have an optimistic attitude with what we're dealing with here, but I'm just, I'm not as fearful of the pandemic as I am the medicine. And I'm sorry, I just really believe that we gotta, we gotta get back to what we do, and the longer we stay away from it, the harder it's going to be on everybody involved. And so I hope everybody starts off well with the virtual learning, and we don't need it very long. But anyways, with that, have a happy return, and God bless Currituck County.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Oh, boy. We've got many members of the class of 2020 heading off on new adventures, some going to college, some entering the work world, some going in the service. I'd like to wish all of them well on their new journeys. We've had many businesses, nonprofits, individuals fund scholarships for their students, some of which would be Farm Bureau with the Tilly Powell Scholarship, and our 4-H, and Outer Banks Association of Realtors, State Employees Credit Union. I'd like to thank all of those for helping our students as they pursue higher education. I'd like to give a shout-out to our hard-working faculty and staff members. I know they've worked hard to get us back as we return to learn. Hats off to you folks. I hope that our students and faculty and staff members have a great school year, and for all the parents, you're a part of this, getting these students where they need to be as well. I just would encourage you, as you are implementing this Return to Learn at home, if you need help or you have questions, reach out. Somebody with the school system is there to help you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Dr. Dobney?
Yes, I'd like to thank all the teachers and staff who worked on the Return to Learn Plan, and hope that we have a great school opening using the Return to Learn Plan. So once again, thank them for all their, you know, hard work and effort in developing this plan.
Craft? Teachers and staff, I can't even imagine the stress and anxiety you're feeling right now as you start school. This is not business as usual. I want you to know that you are all amazing, and I know you will succeed. Parents, teachers, students, staff, you've got this.
Thank you. Dr. Lutz?
I'd like to thank the board for their support in, which is truly unprecedented times. These are difficult decisions, and since March 13, we've been facing one after another. We're about to embark on a school year that we've never, ever approached this way. I too look forward to getting our kids back in the building and seeing some return to normalcy. Our families, I feel for you as a father of school-aged children from college all the way down to middle school. These are, these are definitely tough times and things that we've never had to deal with before. And so we're going to continue to reach out and do our best to create a learning environment that is personalized as much as possible when we're going through Google meets and Zoom meetings, and it feels so good when we do see our people. So also, a couple other updates. The greenhouse has been finished, and we're going to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony as soon as the old greenhouse is demolished. And so we'll make sure that that is a wonderful public event and invite people out and get, definitely get some great pictures. Couple other things, we have a drive-through lunch for all of our staff, and of course, the board at that time, at 11:00 to 1:00 on Wednesday, the 14th, and that will replace our typical convocation, followed by an outstanding speaker that I think everyone will enjoy, Kevin Honeycutt. He was actually coming to speak ironically on March 13. We're going to have him come by for about an hour virtually, and really look forward to that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our board chair, Ms. Etheridge.
Thank you. I just wanted to read an email that we all received from our North Carolina Superintendent, Mark Johnson. Educators, parents, and caretakers, these are challenging and frustrating times for everyone. There are a lot of different opinions on how to return to learning this month. About the only thing we can all agree on is that no one is going to be happy with how this school year is starting. We get it. Distance learning doesn't replace being in a classroom, and it's a struggle for parents, students, and teachers. At the same time, many educators and parents share concerns about the potential for the spread of COVID-19 at schools. The tough decisions on how communities are returning to schools are being made by your local school leaders under the requirements set forth by Governor Cooper and his team. Every school faces unique challenges that reflect the uniqueness of each community, so different decisions will be made for different communities. Currently, two out of the three North Carolinas students will start this school year with distance learning. At your North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, we have been supporting local schools and communities by providing multiple strategies on how schools can meet the COVID-19 requirements for in-person learning. We have worked closely with local districts to strengthen distance learning so that it is improved from what students, parents, and teachers faced at the end of last school year. It still will be not perfect, but it will be better and specifically should have more live interactions with teachers, even if over video chats. Please join us as we work to help encourage each other and our students. We can all agree that no one is happy that COVID-19 has created obstacles unlike any we have ever faced. We don't have to agree on everything after that, but let's work together with grace and encouragement to overcome the challenges ahead. Sincerely, Mark Johnson. And I read that email, and I think he summed up what I was thinking with what we're all facing, and I know this is not what everyone would like to do, but it's the best we have at this point. We're all in this together, and it's going to be a collaborative effort to be successful. But like Ms. Rose said, if you see your child or someone in need, whatever it is, please feel free to reach out to us, and we will make sure that their need is met. And so I just ask you, let's all work together, let's just try to kick off the school year in a positive direction, and I appreciate all your support. At this time, I need a motion for us to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Or use one of the- Or use one or the other.
That's right.